Thank you.
Thank you.
We're into the last one. John, friend. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, we wanted to touch base with the county, give an update on where things are. It's ours to trail, that level trail grant. We were giving verbal word on April twentieth that we're getting a neck level trail grant from the state. That two point five million. And last week, we got the official letter saying you're in. And there comes the paperwork and all that, or we're on the way. We decided early on that we would split the project, do the north end first, and then following year, we'll pick up the south end. As it set out, it's laid out as part for part, that's the vision of the goal. And this coming year, we're hoping to get started on the construction from where it's stopped right now, in St. Louis fourteen, eleven street from town. Take it out behind McDonald's up here on thirty-five. And that's all we can do, just wow this right now. The following year, twenty twenty-four, we'll start down in the south end and take it over to the entrance, uh, pretty support. And we'll work with the county and go through this down there. So, double effort on our part, but we'll break it to the north end first. And then the following year, pick up and work on the south end. We're pretty excited.
Do you have any time for me?
Yes, and that date will be out. The deadline is December of twenty twenty-five. And it's state and the.
And that the south end, is that for, is that for the bridge door, the active framework?
Right, correct, yes. I've been invited and that's the, uh, for the. Okay.
Was it going all the way to our state park?
I'm sorry.
Not, not with this space. Is that where the places coming in their will?
When the money comes in, that is the plan.
Yes, which is coming from the basis of what they get to the park. Now, the dollars involved, the nice.
John, you want to talk about the sewer project and how that might?
Yeah, that, the, uh, state park is approved, looking at the water line and sewer line up to the state park. And they'd be working with, uh, County Board of Mac on utilities, supplying utilities for our sewer service up to state park. We are hoping that we can dig down our network and put trail on top of that and finish this. Uh, that hasn't been approved on our end yet. The state has got approval to put the water lines in. Uh, and that's a, I guess, twenty twenty-four, I think it is. I'll make sure the following year, the ready load with nine of that project. So, that part for us could probably end up twenty twenty-five, possibly, if it was a stick. But we would like to go off the east side of US thirty-five and take the trail right through the entrance, uh, giving you a little bit of. It'd be a very nice fit for us and we could wrap this up, part for part with that.
John, how was the master grant, master funds for the grant?
Um, we had to have forty percent master fund for our county. And we made a campaign on a year. And we, right now, are sitting at, right at twenty-five percent of that. And as a matter of fact, with the fact we went over the twenty percent, gave us more points in the decision for awarding the trail. And we were very appreciative of that. And we received funds from people that we didn't really know. Um, some of the people who made pledges added more to it than originally pledged. And of all the pledges that were made, we only had two that we couldn't thank for on. One was from Ohio, everybody tracked her down, looked for where she went. And then one in Lafayette, uh, we just couldn't. And the total on those two, I think it was three hundred dollars. So, we more than made up for that loss of the actual funding. So, the pledges were very supportive, I mean, that was, we had no idea how much we were gonna get getting, get out there and go.
So, you're seeing a lot of support for that.
The money coming in and there's, yeah, the point there.
Very surprising how many of those people really approved the trail and put no sense in the pledge. People don't understand how great this is for the community. It's surprising. Well, are you seeing an increase in usage about every year?
Well, the basic take was, uh, what, uh, COVID twenty twenty, that's when it truly shot up.
Okay.
And it stayed strong since then. Yeah, and there's more and more people coming in from out of state. One of the things that I noticed, uh, in just working out with the trail, you'll be sitting at a trailhead and somebody will pull up in their car and you keep talking with them, finding out what's going on. And I had one here recently, uh, he drove in to the trail from Muncie. His brother lives in Chicago and they said, "We've never ridden this fell before." They come together, they meet in the trailhead, they ride up to, uh, Winmac, have lunch, and turn around right back home, see your brother, and off they go. I mean, that's not a common thing. And a lot more of that has taken place than we ever thought would happen. It's popular trail, uh, we work hard, we care of it, uh, like this last weekend with the windstorm, we had, uh, the last day of the county. We had seven trees down on the trail, uh, as of today, but all clear. Uh, we work hard to keep it clear and keep it in shape. And, uh, a lot of the work, we do have a good team of volunteers to come out and, um, when there's trouble, we, we can give the support. We really appreciate that. It's, uh, it's well received in the community.
We appreciate your efforts as well. Want to give it to part for part, or just want this thing. And I would say your efforts on getting the grant, because I know there's a lot of work for that, and also, uh, making the trail, getting the support, making the trail. It's clear, clear to me as a user that it's, uh, well making, well making, right? Anything else to do? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you supporting.
Okay. Um, the first thing that I would like to talk to you about is raising some of the prices on heat schedules and the prices that we charge in the office. It's been a lot of years since we raised any prices. And I'm gonna keep the subject and regret subject the same, the well permit the same. The only thing I'm interested in raising is the temporary food permits because they are giving, they're having more temporary people than we are regular food permits. I mean, we're getting some really crazy temporary food permits. I mean, we have someone who wants to do on tune, move down the river selling food and we have people wanting to make food in taverns in other counties and then bring here and sell it off the food truck, sell all kinds of really weird stuff. So, it's a lot more inspection, viewing that. You know, we get tattoo partners to say, since they both do a great job, they're really good about hunting stuff and they get something to do in here, we respect them. We do want to raise deferred food certificates to be, um, you know, one of most of the other counties. As you know, with certificates, we do have to give part of that money to the corners continuing the education fee every year, so that when their price goes up every year, so the more they, less we make on that certificates. Most of our funeral homes are there because the other counties have been raising theirs. And we have corrections and changes to, like name changes, term. Those type of things, those take a lot of time to do. We have to have an appointment and it takes quite a bit of time to get those done. And most of our public health nursing, as you'll see, uh, tetanus, yeah. We were losing money at the current prices. We have now almost every vaccine that we have there, so we had to raise all of those because we were, the medicine had gone up so much, so we did have to raise all of those. Um, and even our administrative fee for the vaccine for children, we get reimbursed for that from Medicaid and you get charged anywhere up to fifteen dollars. So, we did raise that, we weren't charging to Medicaid and we can charge up to fifteen for me to raise that. So, Kevin tells me that we have an ordinance that, that there were, that somebody would be interested in doing now.
Yeah, I would very much. Please.
Yes.
Please.
For that right here, we have. Some of ours, some of ours have the same, you know, Frank, this test, we had the first set up. We used to do some of the, we used to get three from the state, now we have the five. Things that we didn't use to have.
Can we move to the second discussion? Given this one, council, council.
Now, those particular organs, this, uh, county through the executive, uh, really need to be scared, but it does have to be by order to change that, uh, when we, when we cop by organs or so, I'll get that out and we'll adjust it as necessary and bring it back to you for.
Do you think that they would be able to go to, in fact, like. Okay, that'd be our big time.
Can you move instead with any other discussion? We'll be able to.
And the next thing I would, do you think, well, I do need to see the council next week, but our nurse, Henry, had just came back from a conference and she had a tablet while the other counties were having, the nurses were having their malpractice insurance paid by the county. She's been getting her own malpractice insurance while working for the county for the last twelve years that she's been working with. And some, uh, organs were gonna need that aspect of the county, but you want to mention it tonight. So that you all, we're gonna, we're gonna mention that to them next week. She was like four hundred fifty dollars a year. But it does, in her job description, that she does have to carry malpractice. So, I would assume it would be okay as we've been back to her job description, that the county would pay for that, you know, she has to have as part of her job, that the county would pay for that. Or she'd bring the information for her insurance policy, stating that she did. Do you think that we don't, you know, like bring that information to the, to the council then?
And then the post, post, that you can play, right?
Yes. The next thing I had to talk about, the topic of things.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of a couple things for the Flat Sky County Lead to State and something on the EMA tradition. So, first off, we evaluated the plan. I believe I submitted my request to be on the, can I submit a copy of that? It's a text. It took about a month to go through and do all that. Uh, when we had our EMA director and asked, he's pumped, we've done it, we approved it and all that. But I actually haven't really got back to doing it and it's pretty expensive. Uh, so I have the sheet with me, I'm wondering, or requesting if we could get a sign and approve. Because I already submitted the documents to the state by EHS. I have to submit this, so it kind of brings it in and we're good to go. And I, I got the hardback copy, I will update it with all the details and get that all paid in here for you.
Can I just, um, let this, we brought, send it to, I'd be based in that.
Yeah, so I brought the, me and Simon on the other side, by other side, we're here for the time in Baltimore, then we can get it approved through the state. Do we just get the state's check or? Yeah. Well, thank you very much for doing that to me. That was the plan that for the county, for the state, and out there, for another year. The second thing, and I'm kind of fairly new on this side of things, since I've only been in here four years doing this. And as the chair of the ELC, the EMA and ELC work together. So, the EMA director will be the head of all things happening when there is a disaster or hazardous material spill or a actual major hazard event. The ELC's background is just all hazard. So, the ELC is responsible for the exercise that we do, things like that, training, to educate on hazardous materials. The EMA side, I have not been involved in meetings yet, but I know we are looking for a new director, a new professional to EMA side. I've heard some different things, I believe I've talked with you moment a couple times. But according to title, Jan, in Indiana IPHS, we have to have it, right? Every county has to have it. And the reason they're doing that is to protect and coordinate with all first responders, things like that. If a major accident happens, they will be the person that sets it up. If the Indiana state involved, it's this person involved, whatever. So, it's gonna be a crucial step for the county. I don't want to see the county faltered by not having it. So, with that being said, I'm. I don't, I'd like to apply, I believe I have a file on the way and has in this resume. I don't know, you guys have any candidates that possibly want that position? And so, my question to you, is we are going to do interviews on the ten in the health department, Harry and I, so I believe you're on board too. And, uh, but then, and we are responsible for doing that initial interview and then creating a board to you guys to prove that it's gonna be, that it's. Any thoughts?
I don't have any candidates.
Okay. What are some that you would expect from the EMA director responding?
Well, they have, they have administrative, the national agency, they have to assist them, they have to be fluent in that. That's, that's difficult, you don't have to know what you're talking about, have to understand. You need to know how the, um, yes, the eight agencies, of course, they'll be working with these agencies, how they work together and what their core jobs are, to be willing to attend to district two meetings. Uh, we have three of us, there's been several, there's several different things, um, should be, or should be, we want to be trained in the same things. They have, um, several certifications starting. And it's not just being ready for if there is some sort of incident. Here, there's a lot of training that you need to be certified. I mean, it's a lot of paperwork and with the, the ELC part of it, quite a bit of money comes back to the county for that. And I remember the top of the EMA director, if we do have some sort of disaster, that person is the one that you file your, your payment information through in order to get any of that money back. And it doesn't go through them, we're not getting seen, this fund's coming back to us. So, it's really important person to have. And if you try to do that part time, so many things fall through the cracks and then you go for a person, of course, the person, people put back a job over and over and over. So, the city has really pushed for every EMA director, every full-term person. And I remember part of Sherri's job, that she was in the, the, the EMA. She, um, has a lot of, something that we're supposed to talk about as well within the job, but this need for some part of that too.
We had this discussion with the, the last joint session. That's when the decision came up advertised as half-time position. The other option was to, uh, share personally, uh, the company. I think most people, you know, are, they were the proud, not, not the great of that. Also, so I did go with, you know, the half-time position, uh, as advertised. But I would say maybe we need to revisit this at our next joint session. Well, it's hoping to be a buying decision and, uh, be, be willing to come back again. Joint station, joint discussion.
So, we should not have.
The other is?
Yes.
So, are we talking about not, we interviewed you, I mean.
That's what's up.
Well.
When's the next joint meeting?
I think, uh, December, second way to December.
I think we go ahead with, uh, with those interviews. Regardless, we're gonna have to figure out from staying, you know, this may not be a full time, maybe half. And we'll find out if they're interested only if it's a half, if it's a full time position and we would have some correction to go with. That's the, well, the only other thing part of that, I guess, I don't know whether if he did not buy, you know, I said with the advertising, half time, so.
Do I have to take back? What, did you say the full time?
Yeah, I have not seen these things. I'm sorry, the one person that has the quality, and I believe she is.
She give you.
Yeah. And, and I don't, you know, it's all from the decision with the county, I mean, you have to do it right with the county though. And if it's based on what they're thinking, part of the salary for the EMA director is a reimbursement grant. So, it's not like county paying the full salary for it, getting it first. So, just, just working with them and stuff, I, I really hope we make the right decisions. Absolutely, they can get proof on the ground, something that happens. You know, doing some of the exercise we've done the last four years, like the part of, there's a lot that goes on, you know, very little amount of money. One person came in, it's a coordinated effort. So, um, we are also having, you know, the meeting this Wednesday, we have our meeting for next week. So, if they would like to come, they can, and see, and hear what we do. I got a big dinner written out and stuff like that, so.
They're talking about having that EMA building, yes, the roof from these, that's right, count.
Yeah, are we, can we have a meeting there or no?
I'm not visiting there, I didn't.
We heard yesterday from the coroner, something, was at my house and he said they had some issues with part of the roof as well. It's like a worst of something.
Yeah. I've been contacting, I've been, I've been, I've been.
I'll check it, okay, we'll check, we'll check.
Yes, three, uh, rivers coming in, that's, that's, there's a fear there. The roof that's there, put it back, um, make sure you connect the weather, or seal.
Through the pipeline.
So, uh, maybe flip it back over, stack it down to the winter, yeah, right there. So, that's a lot of gear right now. But all I'm saying is, if you have another place to hold the heat, might be that.
And I agree, if we need to, we can work on that. You know, obviously, we have a business here, and we do have a conference room there, so I need, which is, let me know. I'll also resend everything, I'll, I'll, it, um, it's, uh, we, the board.
And that would be, so, we're literally in her month, I believe.
Yep. Yes, let me know on that.
Okay.
So, hey, I have a quick question, uh, now, I know that other counties may have a larger EMA staff, right? But I've seen a fair amount of events in the quiet time, or there's nothing's going on in defense of EMA being involved with that. Uh, like, what size of a stack is that big for EMA to be involved with, uh, events such as a bicycle or anything sort of?
Well, wrong anyways. So, EMA, like disasters or, no, this, this is, uh, uh, in this quiet time, which is majority of the time. Yeah, we got it. Okay, but in, in a, um, county that, okay, okay, a, a county.
Well, like when we had our public clinics, Sherri, that opened us, you know, we use their a lot as we're just, but she makes money, we think they're quite good.
Maurice, I think you're also discussing something that a lot of times in Flat Sky County reacts closely again.
That's correct.
Yeah. We've come up with a lot of volunteer work over the years.
Yeah, okay. But you know, at the time, we, we still have at this point, but it's no longer, we could go back to like our, we had. But like, if, if there would be a issue, you could get it out, fire it up, you need a light.
I do know that, I did work out of the seven counties. I think that was a, a lot. Well, she had the District Two trailer here and she got called a lot to the other places too, because it always count on her. She was someone and she passed like every certification and because she already been, I don't know. She already worked with ER and she already thrown in, so she was so well around with, they called her for a lot of stuff in other counties. So, she helped them a lot too, they always count on her. And so, I think there's a lot more things that the EMA person can do and they get asked to do it.
I understand, okay.
I do think that it can vary, first of all, within the district.
And I know a lot of counties, like, uh, the other county, they have big connections there.
Yes.
Our county.
And Fulton County has a good personality too, so we are.
And I know they've all worked together because it's a long area, it's a whole, not a big city.
Maybe once a month, I believe, sometimes twice a month.
So, there's a good connection, just with the place, like, if the person's not, they got all called up and they're gonna go and there's something happening. I'll definitely, and it called up, they need help, we can send them.
Yeah. And they like to come on to the last.
And I, I know we have people from, um, before, have Matt, he, yeah, he has come down and actually done some of our training for us and be the technician level, have Matt certified, so. Yeah, so we can do train with him, with people like that, to bring them.
I know she posted a lot of.
She does, and I can, and I might go up there.
Yeah, that's what I guess.
So, but we, if I present to EMA, then he's present to ELC, so we'll do anything we can that work for people. We really need some.
You have a deadline, we, getting that, that's the question that I have.
So, but, I present to P M A, and his personality, so we'll do anything we can that works for people, we really do, so.
Yeah, you have a deadline, we, getting that, that's the question I have. We have stations for those, and one.
Okay, so we should have a meeting.
That's fine, um, I guess, one thing, we're gonna ask a question, are you willing to have it filled out, came word one, we have. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's all I got, thank you very much.
So do you want my, uh, speech schedule, that I have previously signed, you said you'd talk about it, do you want to come to the.
I don't really have a lot to listen to, but I don't think we have any work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm bringing up that battery backup, have the addition, for the addition of justice centers, for all the servers in the county, just how's down there, uh, our one dispatch, it's working, uh, it's not picking up, the addition, the county service, or, what's that, what this thing is, it's just a battery backup, but Chris, he goes now, this, I'm saying, he says, uh, generates, it's all, it's, all of the product stuff, and, going on and off, so, uh, I guess, I'm just looking where that money's supposed to come from, I don't have a Bible, forty-four thousand eighty dollars, that's just all.
Forty-four.
So, uh, I, I don't have the money for it, and I don't know if that comes to you guys, council, and the honest, but I don't even know how I got it, here I am, so, um, go to look for that money, or who's gonna pay that, I would assume that it didn't something, construction, um, I don't know.
That should be part of the rolling project, not the construction, I know that our electricians expressed concerns about it, I'm not sure that the feedback, feedback they got was especially reassuring for them, but.
Well, we've got a quote for it, and, you know, so, I don't know, I.
Maybe they've done that wrong, see if this is in there, maybe, or, there's a part of there.
I mean, like the sheriff said, part of the issue is that all, all these new servers are going in, they're going in there, the servers are part of the rolling project, you know, once we have the last construction invoice, it's possible we'll have enough contingency law to dress up, I can't speak to that until, Tom White sends the last bill.
Sounds like it's pretty bullish, though, we can't wait until.
Yeah, I, 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 like I said, I, I, I wanted to make sure that the dispatch center was covered, so I just texted her, you can call her about that, and she said that it's good, but I don't know if they moved county services down there yet, or not, Jason, or, or what, you know, the down there, it's not, you know, I just kind of, hey, we just want to know what one's doing here, so, and it's good, but, um, I, I, I don't know about the other county server three, and if they can move over there, I, you know, I feel the feeling that the biggest, probably, I T user in the county, you know, just grows, but, um, you know, that's what are here and there, uh, I don't know, what we want to use it, I've got the guy, and he's a quote, and all that, I think you just kind of look for an answer on, are we gonna do this, or not gonna do this, or something like that, so.
I was saying, we, um, we, they, I can investigate this a little bit, um, because do you have a quote at all, Nathan, or, I mean, if you could send it out, I'll afford it, you, I, you guys, this is, I, I think probably agree with some of the discussions, in fact, he was probably watching out for it, and I want to, for that, but, it is actually, I think, maybe I'll leave that, um, she just wanted me to, we want to text, and we just, I don't know, for that to do. You think you will, all right, thank you.
Number one, Justice Center, um, received the final invoice from Lumenon Owen, sending on that bill until we get this issue sorted out with the extract memories in the casa office, um, John Allen, our body supervisor, and I need to be trying to get an answer from the, from the A on, the subcontractor, and he has not gotten that, and he sent it all over the day, so we're still investigating that, the last of the furniture will be arriving on Wednesday morning, that's a couple of chairs in the turf courts, chairs in the prosecutor's office, and a few other consultants, that would be the end of the furniture delivery, came on the doors, or higher layers, uh, tunnel length, you see, folder on, uh, out here, Highway Department group, I have sent invitations to handle contractors that do roofing, that was from the over yard, and that, that various head launch, and, and, it is posted on the county's Facebook page, and both the invitation to quote, and the plan specs, and all the other relevant documentation are on the county's website, in one of the venues, in the Highway Department's page, um, we'll be opening a site visit up here at eleven A M Eastern time, quotations are due to me at four o'clock local time on Friday the ninth of December, so that the commission can open them, have the joint section on the, well, likewise, for the work release project, uh, publish the legal notice for bids in both local papers, for interest, and publish it on the second Facebook, along with the plan specs, and everything else, plan specs, all projects are also available by office, or our company to you, we'll be doing a pre-bid meeting at the Justice Center, uh, two o'clock local time, on the twenty-first as well, just with the Highway Department project, this will be due to me by four o'clock Friday the ninth, and a little bit by the commissioners, after joint session, well, I have begun conversations with the relevant department heads about the generating prospect of relocating files currently stored in the basement, so that they can be clear about the way the construction can start, any question on those three projects before I hit into the line there, okay?
So you have items on a checklist, or a justice center, just watch right here.
It's those doors, figuring out casa, and furniture, and then a damaged door, that's being filed, that's held by the doer agreement, and that's waiting for them to finish up, hopefully, when I call.
We got an email from someone that talked about, uh, sinkhole, or something close to the sidewalk, is that the one, I, this is the first I hear, I'm figuring it out.
It's over at the new parking lot, right, is where we got it from?
What do you want? Oh, okay.
I don't remember how it. We got an email from someone that sent it to everybody about trying not to walk through some part out by where we just paved on the new parking lot.
All right, moving into courthouse running, uh, number one, find a calendar, update you a list, a email, um, good news is we find, uh, a calendar before, bad news is that we're honestly, and call, hoping, um, we might be able to see it out, but as of right now, and on blank, I would be on a calendar, that, long story short, going through every one of the items, um, has construction drawings, rights are permitted, completed at the end of, there are a couple of places there, but I think on our end, and on kind of like turn, the timeline, timeline will be able to be cut fairly easily, but I don't think with the architect group, it's just gonna depend on a lot of things, including all of the feedback that we tend to get to the, the next phase of, um, and, and, and there's no one to call for here, we have asked Matt to take on two additional projects, we're working on this, uh, he and I, during the, have spent a lot of time trying to get feedback, all the effects department has been showing together, and I've had a call from the Justice Center, and it's time for this caser to shoot, but we are continuing to move forward, it's just obviously, like, Kevin and I had a call with the consultant that wanted to go over the facility last week, uh, sort of give refocus on the paperwork side of things, the, that's kind of the focus, whole bond issuing process, and of course, we'll keep recording through the council, and getting Google, and that's very, with that, any questions from the calendar? Our two project design, um, architects are moving into second time drawings, the, uh, whichever, design developer drawings, will be picking back up with one-on-one conversations, and gathering meetings, to find some layout and design issues in each office, looking at the furniture needs, all of that sort of thing, just a lot of polishing up, double checking, correcting from the first time drawing, one thing in particular, I'm ready to be able to input on, ninth is the issue I previously brought up about possibility of cost savings on windows, by making some of them fixed and optional, the window consultant that has worked with Lumenon, thought that if we reduce, if we had enough of a split, enough of a balance between operable and inoperable windows, we could recognize some cost savings, cost savings, but it is, like, just how much it would cost to set up a second line in the factory to build even up with it, they do offer, and this is just one manufacturer, obviously, but the one that is working with them, they do offer a downgrade to your windows, where at least you pay a little bit of money, but it's a hundred and fifty bucks a window, it's over a thousand dollar savings, for something that is proven not to be very popular with our, but I'm really not convinced that planning to proceed in that direction is the right course, so what I would like, there are three options you can do, though, we can do that anyway for the little savings there, and then, obviously, it's a thousand dollars, they don't get control, but we're just gonna proceed assuming all windows will be operable, obviously, there's some that are already, but all of these, they don't, or, we should proceed assuming that they will all be operable, but include once you get to the ultimate, where if subcontractors convince, since they could, show us real savings, by making some of them inoperable, maybe with a different manufacturer, or whatever, that, and so, if, you know, we're not totally operative, or the operator doesn't save enough, we're still going forward, beginning all, including all of the windows in. I think that was, that was good, just a little story, I figured as much, but I wanted to make sure to get them. Um, any questions about the design besides for this, and I, I don't want to, I shouldn't even close the meeting down, but if there's anything in particular, and you were wondering, okay, um, last thing on the courthouse, is temporary locations, as I believe, I, you all know at this point, the assessors, auditors, reporters, the treasurer's office have agreed to move it into the east annex, and share a comfortable and cozy space for the version of the project, uh, going out, and I will work with the department individually, and join the M agents to see when scheduled each move makes sense, based on the expanded timeline, and also recommending the different times of year that it is, like, settlement or tax collection, uh, that sort of thing, but we will work on that, and quickly deliver from moving on, the only outlier is the clerk's office, um, clerk manager, that he decided looked at two properties in downtown, and that are available, and we agreed that the building at one seventeen East Main Street, which is next to College County Abstract, and owned by Thomas, the east side of that building would be the best option available for, 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 um, Mr. Shumers has agreed to maintain his previous monthly rate of six hundred dollars close to billings, he's generally been really comfortable to work with, um, even though we have to leave the, moving out of the, the, the schedule for the project, I would recommend that we move forward as quickly as possible, securing their pending cabinets, sign off, or whatever lease we put together, um, and I say that this hard because the whole, the building equipment all across county right now, we're gonna be coming back, going back, small things, but if we can avoid them having to, look at all back in the courthouse, totally late, while we all back out, you know, and it will give us a lead time on seeing how much stored documentation that we can get out of the Justice Center and courthouse, the way that the clerk office, we can start looking in advance, start cleaning up space, especially the building in the Justice Center basement, so that we can have this project in a very progress and award.
Those spaces are storing documents.
I don't know how much, still, I, I don't know, I don't think we're really having anything that we need to get out, but I think we can fit some stuff in there and start.
So, Mr. Shumers is a lot, gonna send him, like, one year, you.
No, 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 he's not, he's not. He's happy to work with the county.
Questions? Uh, so, do we need a motion to, uh, go ahead, go ahead, that sounds like.
No, I'd make a motion to present Kyle with the lease, or all, ask Kyle if he has something, I believe, or he got the lease ground, building before, I thought they have something, well, just a good time, where I can grab something quickly.
Do we want to start, like, Wednesday, so that we can put the voting.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
And, and Kyle's already.
Well, yeah, we're gonna move into, after voting tomorrow, so, we'll get something together, so, just all you need to do is approve us, grabbing the lease, and then presenting Kyle, and once he signs it, we'll bring it back here, but, I can move in in the meantime.
Yeah, I would, yeah. Make a motion to, uh. Five, they come in, sir, oh, six hundred for one. And say, also. The other discussion. Move paper, send that in, uh, anyway.
All right, I have a court, we've got a bunch of answers, like, communication, um, we can do, that, and all that, most of the reference staff, first thing, on Tuesday evening, the C B C approved sustaining certain parts of our bylaws pertaining to number of members, current length, the point, we've done this because of the potential restructuring that we've been investigating, if the C B C ceases to exist, or ceases to exist in its current form, I'm going to go on through a lot of work, working with the public bodies, the field agencies, for people who might serve four months, and then have the account end, that, um, so, what we, what our attempt is, that if, a year from now, restructuring happens, materialize, or happens to materialize in a way that substantially changes the C B C, we would just go back to operating under these bylaws, and the worst thing that happens is that current members end up with a six month, a seven-year term instead of a six-year term, or a four-year term instead of a three-year term, otherwise, is to just keep moving forward, technically, the bylaws, that's probably within the, with the commission, but since we're kind, we're temporarily setting, you know, one-off payment, the numbers, unless we get below a certain number, wouldn't be sure if it matters to you, if you have any questions. Right now, we are, so, team members, we agree that as long as we did not get below nine, we would not, our way to replace anybody who leaves, um, unless we had a situation where, for whatever reason, everybody who stepped down, and was appointed by the county, or county, so we had too much of an value, representatives to seven or eight private sector, and didn't deal with taxpayers, and, or, but this way, you just play that, it saves me from one extra task, and having to find people with old seats that might not be this for at all.
No, I did not try.
Yeah.
It's just one of the, right?
Yeah, yeah, was there any concerns that you want me to take on from the C B C? All right, um, speaking of restructuring, I am hoping that tonight, we will give the green light, work with Kevin, you, council, proceed with attractive requirements for establishing a redevelopment commission, and an accountable, technically, the ordinance, but I, for the accountable renovation commission, would need to be adopted by the council, whereas redevelopment is your responsibility, there's still some questions about the proposed restructuring. There's still some questions about the proposed restructure, but setting up these commissions itself, which is definitely, if you want to make everything happen correctly on people. Something that is kind of doing, I believe, the C B C believes, just to start building this up. To some of these tools that we don't have access. Also, in hoping to ask about setting up a tourism commission, that's going to require some more intensive discussion with the county council. Because I realize, under reading the statute, that. It's a tourism commission, plus being an eighty percent independent option, it is actually a prerequisite for establishing a tourism. And I don't think I want to ask the commission to start that before the council even discuss whether they want to create a new act. So, um, I will discuss the act of natural recognition, the order of commission, and we can push out to them next week. But I would like to green light take this from the investigator stage to the implementation stage, just for those two, and it's not the tourism, not the restructuring of C B C and bylaw, and it's just hitting the wall of like, on the two. That's very. They will take, probably even the year before, we would have a draft order, but it's not the first year, first year for you to approve, so it's not for me, no, when I sort of. But like, I've been, I've signed up time. Reading the rules and understanding the timeframe, and it's time to settle.
So is there any timeline reason not to, like, just on the, 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 the.
We can do that, absolutely, I don't, I, the only good part is, is there's a valid, regular, it's simple, it's immediate. And if I can get what I need, to unite, and to the council next week, it would be really possible without caution, but if you want.
I guess I would like to hear any concerns. If you don't see the man, just do a little, say, you need me, or should.
Don't work, uh, for train yell, people hogging the whole evening, it's under.
We'll wait.
Couple of quick, quick updates, won't go through it, but any more tactics? Uh, section two C, I did include a copy of the very simple, uh, report that I prepared for the C B C on implementation of the. You can play this. Last week at the C B C meeting, how long did they, 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 they pointed, they pointed, they pointed. Finally, um, last couple of pages, any more tactics? I apologize if I didn't get this out in advance, or I did not have an answer that I needed in the focus afternoon. Uh, I would like to attend the Indiana Act of Natural Development Association Conference in mid-December in Indianapolis. You might recall, you approved my vote to the fall conference in August. I had a COVID scare, did not feel. Um, the hotel, I was a cancel reservation without incremental costs to come in there. The association had already gotten my, got my deposit, or they credited me, so that I got, you know, in there, so it wouldn't require additional expense, they already have their money, it's just a question of. Whether they send it back or apply to mention users, or if I could apply it.
Name of the second, name of the government request, other discussion. Who can say that?
I agree. Yeah, I would go back to, I was from last time, I mean, after that, if the owner, they will present us with a lease, I don't think that's, uh, important. You know, make a lease, uh, they will present us with a lease as the. The tenants that we will, and what, yeah. Want to clarify that.
Okay, we're going to do the business, we're just through with signing claims, table number twenty-two.
Okay, yes, I have, uh. Repeated plate payroll number twenty-two, and I make a motion to approve as presented.
All second. Okay, then you go and approve, approve seconded, other discussion. Can I say aye?
Aye.
Minutes, then remain, uh, over fourteen, and special station, uh, November third.
Hey, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
The consecutive, any other discussion? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Then item three, we have the appointment of, uh. Aaron White, and Blaskai, more than us, who are more than trustees. Make that motion to approve. Aaron White, can I say that?
Yes, I second that, Roger.
No consecutive, you have the discussion. Say aye.
Uh, aye.
We have a hobby schedule, or, uh. And also a meeting schedule. And we had some discussion about, uh. Having one of our meetings very close to a noise station. Try to resolve some issues for the office, and, uh. Also, might be, I have a few questions to this noise station sometime, so. We will. Motion to approve each two calendars, with one exception, it's by just Tybo. And I'd share it all, eh? You got May sixteen, there is fifteen, but it's probably Monday, May first, and Monday, May fifth. That correction, better move it through, each two, schedule, so. Second that, all the favor.
Aye. Aye.
Those. Any other board, again. Community comments?
Not my identity, if there is some issues with the recusal. Or, of a, of a. You have, uh, information that I found is. Must occur to the whole discussion. According to Robert's rule of order, the preferred way to do that, assuming the discussion starts, the member they think is refused themselves. Announces refusal. Announces by, their refusal themselves, and then they remove themselves through the room. There is another method. That they remove themselves to the table and become a member of the audience. But if they seek in any way, they identify themselves as a member of the public. Not, or as a morgue review. Disprives more, more of humor, this. I think that policy needs to be reviewed. I think.
Aye.